I'd like to call and order the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education and welcome everyone here tonight. Would you please stand as our Navy Junior ROTC group, Wildcat Company, presents our colors? And then would you please join me in the pledge to the flag?
Color, white.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And you may be seated. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Agenda is approved unanimously. Next we move to special reports and presentations, and we'll talk about some of the good things that are going on in our schools. And Ms. Webb, we will start with you.
All right, I have Lyndon. And Lyndon's first grade artist made colorful cat clay masks this year. Several were selected by mural artists to paint on the wall at ORNL Federal Credit Union. The prize for being selected will award $600 to the Lyndon School Art Program. Two students were selected to be honored in the Dogwood Student Art Exhibition in April at the Maryville College of Art for their outstanding artwork. Marley Burton, who was in kindergarten, won first place for her Nile Crocodile painting collage, and Track Robinson, third grade, won first place in his category for his fruity fun Steel Life painting. Both students will receive a ribbon and cash award, as well as have their work professionally framed by Fast Frame of Knoxville. Some good news from Lyndon.
Mr. Stevens.
I have the pleasure of Willbrook. Willbrook and Lyndon PTO worked together to put on the first Rumble on Robertsville in Wildcat, in the Wildcat Arena. The event included a staff versus staff basketball game in which Lyndon took the trophy. Willbrook had 65 student cheerleaders who performed and did a great job. Willbrook also hosted the Boys and Girls Club and Oak Ridge High School football coaches and players during lunch to encourage students to participate in youth football and cheerleading. Students got to try on football pads, helmets, and take pictures with staff and players. On Wednesday, April 13th, some of the Oak Ridge, some of our students and staff were able to honor our very own Willbrook Bear, Johnny Purnell, at McGee Tyson Airport in a welcome home celebration. Mrs. Michelle Cheneau, second grade teacher, organized the event with her husband, who is an educator in Knox County. Mr. Purnell is a 1957 Oak Ridge High School graduate. On the 13th, 130-plus East Tennessee, World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War veterans traveled to Washington DC to visit memorials built to honor their service and sacrifice. Flight 30 departed Knoxville at 9:00 AM and returned to Knoxville to a large welcome home celebration. And that's the good news from Willbrook.
Ms. Lauren Dean? I don't see anybody here from Lyndon. Is that, what does that tell you? Are they afraid to show their face tonight, or what?
I don't know, everyone's got the trophies, so I'm not sure why they're not here. I'm probably in breaks. So I don't know, sir.
Well, we might have to check into that and just see what the problem is. It sounds like it was great. Ms. McLean.
Okay, I have good news from Robertsville. Two RMS students placed in the recent 4H Piggy Bank pageant. We need to hear about this. One sixth grader took third place and another student placed third in the seventh grade level. Congratulations to these hardworking 4H members. Also, the Oak Ridge Anderson County NAACP hosted a special awards program for the participants of the 2022 NAACP Black History Trivia Contest. First, second, and third place winners were all RMS students. Also, the RMS PE Department would like to recognize sixth grader Evan Cantu, who earned a Gold Star Fitness Award. This award is presented to students who score in the 85th percentile or above on five fitness events during spring fitness testing. Out of more than 700 students at Robertsville, Evan was the only student who earned this award this school year. Wow. Finally, the TSA School, State Competition was held in Chattanooga. RMS students received first and second place in all categories. Wow. And that's just some of the good news from Robertsville.
Ms. Agel.
Well, the Oak Ridge High School's Secret City Wildbots have had a fantastic year, in my opinion. I think it's been one of their best years ever. Told you last month that they had won Electric City Regional and received the Chairman's Award, first time they've ever gotten the Chairman's Award, and that is the highest award given for robotics. Subsequently, they won Smoky Mountain Regional and went to Houston for the World Championship this past weekend. I just got back about 2:00 this morning, so if I go to sleep by 7:00. At the World Championship, they were presented with the Autonomous Award, sponsored by Ford, which celebrates the team that has demonstrated consistent, reliable, high-performance robot operation during autonomously managed actions. Evaluation is based on the robot's ability to sense its surroundings, position itself or onboard mechanisms appropriately, and execute tasks. Now, this is something to consider, that our high school students are programming this robot to complete tasks, and in this case, it was scoop up a ball and shoot it into a high goal. And it's able to do that very, very accurately and consistently, even in autonomous, which you don't see many robots that can do that, even at Worlds. So although they did not win the World Championship this time, I think this is one of the best years ever, and we should be very, very proud of that team.
Absolutely, thank you. My good news comes from Jefferson. The first LEGO League teams and a STEM class attended the Smoky Mountain Regional First Robotics Competition on April 1st, 2022. While on the University of Tennessee campus, the students also participated in an engineering campus tour and a presentation about Friendly Owl and Robotics, that was a robotics fair, for dementia care. Eight JMS students who competed in the TMTA Math Contest ranked in the top 10 for Oak Ridge. And that's just some of the good news going on across our school district. So next, we will move to the public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board at this time, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion. So move. Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. And I know you're waiting on me because it did happen. So I'm back. Well, maybe, there we go. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we move to our items for action. Item A, FY22 Budget Transfer Number Four. This is a second reading. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY22 Budget Transfer Number Four.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Bortles.
As you shared, Mr. Chair, this is a second reading, and just briefly, this covers mid-year adjustments and realignments of the general fund salaries, benefits, and expenditures line, some additional funds for the JMS, RMS marquee signs, additional funds for maintenance operations due to increased prices and needing to complete a few more projects, and then projected bleacher purchase for the baseball field.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote on the motion, Budget Transfer Number Four, second Motion passes unanimously. Next item, 2022 Summer School Fees. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the 2022 Summer School Fees.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Bortles.
As the board can see from the attached memo, there will be no fees for our students in our district for either middle school or the high school. We would charge a fee if we have some non-resident at the high school level only, and you can see at the middle school, we're targeting those students most in need this summer. So that's, no fees for both middle and high school for our students.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, motion is approval of 2022 Summer School Fees. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. This is the one I've been looking forward to. Item C, Approval of the Oak Ridge High School Badminton Club. I don't think this takes a lot of running. Maybe it does, I don't know. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Badminton Club at Oak Ridge High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Bortles.
So by the application, they're going to get exercise after school, some stretching involved, not sure how much running, but it looks like they will be getting some exercise.
Think I remember taking badminton when I was in college during a PE class, and I always found that there were always people that I thought should be professional that I was playing against. I don't know how that always worked out, but you, somebody can hit a badminton birdie. It's a, how am I doing? Birdie unbelievably hard. And you can be injured by them, too. Okay, any other comments or questions? And now, we get a lot, a number of different clubs. It's good that the interest at the high school expands, you know, we don't know how long the club lasts once it gets going, but obviously, there's people that are interested, and above all, they've got somebody that sponsors it, which is just a good thing. So, approval of the Oak Ridge High School Badminton Club, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D is Oak Ridge High School Amphitheater Refresh. Dr. Bortles.
I recommend approval of the ORHS Amphitheater Refresh from M3 Technologies in the amount of $49,753. Best-for-all grant funds will be used for this purchase.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Bortles.
As you can see from the memo, this is basically a refresh of that whole amphitheater, so screen, projector, speakers, the new, a new kiosk, whatever you want to call it, down front, that controls all of the automation and the software. It's just been, we've been just idling this thing along the last few years, and we now have the funds from this grant to be able to replace much of the equipment in that room.
Comments or questions from the board? Ms. McLean.
So will there be lots of the wireless mics for the maskers? Or can we add wireless mics to this?
To the amphitheater? Yeah, I'm not sure if that's included, Dr. Williams.
It's not currently in this bid, but that is something we can explore.
Yeah, we just, the maskers do such a good job, and it's hard for, for people sometimes to hear the kids, so that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Agel.
I believe this is for the amphitheater, which is upstairs across from the counseling, not, not where the maskers perform.
But that still might be a good idea to look for that in that area as well. Other comments or questions? Motion on the floor is approval of the High School Amphitheater Refresh. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Item E, is the Navy Junior ROTC Permanent Structure of Facility Alteration Request. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the NJROTC Facility Alteration Request at Oak Ridge High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens.
I'm glad Commander Clem stayed around. He can tell us, tell us more about this, but basically, for our audience, this will be a sign mounted to the exterior brick wall, and centered in front of the sign, a cement pad to hold a US Navy anchor on long-term loan, which is pretty much permanent from the Naval Museum. So I'd like to ask Commander Clem to come up and talk about it. This is, this is pretty neat. Commander Clem?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the time here. So one of the things that we see with a lot of our ROTC programs, whether it's a junior ROTC or even a college ROTC, is to be able to show off the community, you know, in some display, you know, that, 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 that unit is there. And, and so immediately when, after I came aboard, I started looking for opportunities. The Historical Command said, well, just go ahead and start filling out this paperwork. I don't, we don't ever see these, these type, large type items come across, but go ahead and fill out the paperwork in case they do. We went through a pretty extensive process for facilities and everything else, making sure that every dot, you know, T was crossed and I was dotted, and gave up our firstborn, and we, and we were, we were, we were on the shortlist to get it, get some type of display item that they might come across. I originally requested something from the USS Tennessee, being a connection with the state. Unfortunately, none of that was available, and I was, I was told that at the moment, that there was nothing, nothing available that we could put outside to display for our unit. And that was about December. Came back in, in late, late March, said, we found a, well, now we know, it's about 20,000 pound, we thought it was 13,000 pound, a 20,000 pound, 10-foot-tall naval anchor. Would you like it? I said, yes, please. So had to, had to kind of jump on that one quick because they, they had not seen one come up and have the ability for a school to get a long-term loan on that. And so immediately filled out the paperwork, simultaneous to filling out this paperwork, and starting to work some donations to maybe to get that anchor here. And I'm, I'm really, really happy to say that Y-12 stepped in and with their partners at Mettler Trucking donated 100% of their time to drive to Columbus, Ohio, pick up a 20,000 pound anchor and bring it here, and we had it delivered officially on Monday. Friday we tried, or Thursday we tried, but the, the anchor weighed more than they said it did. So we had to get a larger crane. And so now we have a little bit of work ahead of us. We have to clean it up, preserve it, get this approval, and then we, and then we can move forward with, with the next step of processing and developing a stand for this anchor. The good news is this is a very, very standardized US naval anchor, and we have a handful of extremely nice examples of how to display this properly. So we're looking to do that as we, as we move forward through, through the summer here after we get this approval, so. But we are looking to be able to proudly display that just out front of our ROTC unit here at, at the high school.
Ms. Agel.
This sounds fantastic. Will you have some sort of ceremony when it's ready to be presented and made permanent?
We definitely would like to. Matter of fact, even the trucker that drove it here said he wanted to be here for it. And that is really awesome. So yes, love to do that. We look to put a plaque on there with the folks, names, you know, that donated time and energy, and, and maybe even we have some more that will step forward as we look to build the, the pad to put this on, and it's not going to be a small feat. It's 20,000 pounds can, you put it on dirt, it disappears in the morning. But, yeah.
Commander, did they tell you which ship it came from?
So we do know this. Approximately 20 years ago, it came from the base in Puerto Rico. The Navy base had, had a squadron there called Redtail VC-8, which they had, is a conglomerate of all types of aircraft. And ironically, they had an anchor for their display item, which is not very aviation-minded. But, but, so it sat there for decades. That, that was established in 65, and it sat there as a display item. Matter of fact, it still has their name welded to the bottom of it, not the way it laid down. So we have some work to get that off of there. But, so the, the Historic Command told us they, they knew that contact, but they had no information before that. Luckily, we have a few folks that really like history, and so we were giving them the serial number, and hopefully, we can find out what ship it might have been, been attached to. We'll just say the USS Tennessee for now.
While you're there, we were talking about this before the meeting, and I came back and there was an email from Chief Nichols. And so congratulations is in order, and the email says, I just saw an email from Commander Dial, and we, that's Oak Ridge ROTC unit, we are one of the Area Nine distinguished units again with academic honors.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So congratulations is in order for that.
Thank you. And, and really, if you see any of our cadets, that's, that's what they earned. It's the events that they've gone to, it's the, it's the performance that they've done, whether it's the, whether it's the field meets we go to or the drill competitions, that's really, really what has made us stand out, is our dedicated cadets. And we show up in force when we go somewhere, whether we're going all the way to Bristol to hold the flag out for a NASCAR race, or, or we're, you know, right here at Fulton competing for, in athletic competition, we, they, they, they put their heart and soul into it, and that's what's made us a distinguished unit with honors. And, and just one other thing with that, it also gives us a lot more leverage, and me as the SNSI, it gives me the ability to nominate to all of the service academies, not just to the Navy. And so that really, really, really gives me a whole lot more leverage than other schools have. So that's, it is, it's a win-win, so.
That's, thank you, and yes, outstanding. Thank you, appreciate it. So the motion on the floor is approval of the Permanent Structure of Facility Alteration Request. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Item F, is the purchase of four LU interactive playgrounds. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the purchase and installation of four LU interactive playgrounds for each of our elementary schools.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Bortles.
I'm pretty excited about these. I'm going to ask Dr. Williams to give a brief summary of what this is.
So these are, as he said, very exciting projectors. They're not normal projectors. This is going to be a great advance in technology for our elementary schools. They're going to turn our gym walls in our elementary school to an interactive gaming wall. So imagine a student who has, in the past, played their video game using their handheld controller. Now they will become involved in the game by throwing a ball at the targets on the wall, and it becomes an interactive game. So what's additionally great about this is this projector comes loaded with all kinds of academic activities for kids to do. So we are throwing at our multiplication targets, we are practicing mindfulness and learning social emotional skills through a yoga practice, we are talking about our emotions with social emotional games and targets on the wall. So lots of things that our elementary students are going to get to do to interact with new technology in the gym coming soon.
That's, that sounds great. The board will look forward to coming and participating in that. Yeah. Yeah, good team building, thanks for us. Comments or questions? Please cast your vote for approval of the four LU interactive playgrounds. Motion passes unanimously. We move next to items for information. First item is FY23 Budget Concepts, which you have received a copy of those concepts. And Dr. Bortles, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, Ms. Van Dyke has put together a great few slides there for you, and as we do every year, this is kind of the overall concepts of how we're moving into the budget season. And two weeks from tonight is when we truly get into budget season. But if you have any questions on the slides or the information that's there, please let me know before our meeting two weeks from now. And I think, as you and I talked, Mr. Phil Hour, probably one of the most important one slides, and this is the last slide that has all the meeting dates on there. So we've, we've got those dates there. We have some 5:30 PM meetings, remember, on those nights. But we're looking forward to the budget season. We think it's going to be a fairly simple budget season, as we've been preparing for months, to bring that to you here in a couple of weeks.
Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Just again, to reemphasize, we, we don't know how long those meetings will last. They can be very short, or they can extend a little bit longer. But that's, it will be a time, not only for us to discuss and ask and have questions answered, but there is a point in there, as you well know, that there'll be a public hearing on the budget as well, so an opportunity for anyone who wishes to come and ask questions about the budget. Dr. Borters, we continue to really like, and I know this is a misstatement because it's not really that, but when you say "simple," that's what the board likes. We know for those who've been working for months to put this together, this is in no way a simple task. So we appreciate that effort, but the board looks forward to having the opportunity to see where our budget will take us in the coming year.
I probably should have said a smooth budget process.
Smooth, smooth, yeah, that's probably, that's probably works better. And I know we've invited members of city council to come as well for that presentation. Okay, next item is the Attendance and Enrollment Reports. Mr. Lay.
Basically, if you compare this, this month's enrollment to this time last year, we are up 161. The preschool accounts for 28% of that growth, and then Linden is 45%, and Willowbrook is 21%. So basically, Willowbrook and Linden accounts for 66% of our growth. So once again, we're seeing the growth on the west end of Oak Ridge. Other that, other than that, everything seems to be following the same pattern we've seen in the past.
Questions from the board? Well, as we've said multiple occasions, this is, in reality, a good problem to have because our, means our schools are growing, it means our community is growing, and all of that surrounding and putting the mixture together means, hopefully, a productive community, not only financially, but to bring in those families that will add to our school districts. So we'll see where it takes us. It may take us to some problems, but those could be good problems, but we can figure Financial report, Ms. Van Dyke, any comments or questions? Questions from the board? Moving to Items for Discussion. Old business, new business, communications. Would remind the board not only to check the dates for the budget meetings, but you have received information about a number of things that are open for the board to attend coming up related to our senior graduation night. Dr. Borters and I were talking, we're less, believe it or not, than 30 days away from graduation night. So a lot going on, a lot of excitement. We'll move forward. If you're available to attend any of those events that you've received information about, certainly, please do so. Our next board meeting will be, our next regular scheduled board meeting will be on May the 23rd. That will be a full-packed meeting, as we'll be recognizing our retirees and recognizing our student and Volunteer of the Year that night as well, among other things. And on May 11th, Ms. Agel will be hosting Focus on Education. That'll be the last one of the school year. So take us up to a good ending of that school year. Ms. Williams, Dr. Williams, I think you're the guest, correct? All right, we'll look forward to that. Dr. Borters, any other comments?
No, not tonight. We're, we're zooming into the final parts of the year here, and that's, we always, as administrators say, just hold on, it just gets faster and faster until the end here. But we're, our folks are doing a great job.
Additional comments from the board? Thank each of you for being here tonight and taking your time to be in person with us. Those who are watching, thank you for watching and supporting the Oak Ridge Schools. We don't have Travis back there tonight, but we've got Stephen back there with us tonight. Thank you. And Dave, as always, thank you. Lynn, thank you for keeping us organized up here. And until next time, we're adjourned.